Andrew, can you hear me?
I can, Roger. Yep, you're all set to go.
Andrew, can you hear me also?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can, Bob.
Thank you, Roger.
I told this to Skip, Roger, but you know, you're you're missing the nice weather here in Michigan.
I understand.
We don't get that much of it, so.
Michael, I got this one to work, but I couldn't get the one or other meeting to work. That's interesting.
That is strange. It's probably something with the Zoom link I sent.
I hope so. I did not want to do this on an iPad. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think we are missing the Vice Mayor. There he is. Oh, Mrs. Commissioner Malone, too.
Yep, she just joined.
Hi, Suzy. We lost the there's Jeff. Okay, hi, Jeff. Made it.
Mr. Mayor, you made it in, huh?
Yeah, I did. Different link, I think.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes. I can hear you, Travis.
By my clock, I have six o'clock, so I'm going to go. It looks like we've got everybody here, so I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. We are in session. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge Allegiance. Should we have? Should we all say the Pledge Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing net with me. Tonight's invocation, as you saw, we did not have a person that was going to do that. I did contact Commissioner Wiki and asked him if he would be when he would do that for us. And he agreed. Commissioner Wiki, would you please provide our invocation?
Sure. You know, I just want to to acknowledge, first of all, that, you know, this past year has been a tough year for all of us, you know, in a lot of different ways and and, you know, when it comes down to it, you know, God created us to be in a relationship with others. God said it's not good for man to be alone. We need our family, we need our friends, and we need each other. And so, you know, it's okay that we're all different. We all have our own opinions and that we disagree. That's great. And and to still be friends. And I feel like this commission does a really good job of that, of being able to disagree and still be friends. And it's a good picture of what what unity it looked like. And so I want to pray for unity, and then I'm going to pray for wisdom. So let's pray. God, I just thank you for the unity on the commission and and the city staff as well. God, I pray, Lord, that you would continue that, Lord, that you would grow our relationships together, that tonight that you would help us with decisions. I just pray for wisdom over us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Wiki, for those kind words. Appreciate that very much. Next item is roll call. Ken, I'm trying to. There you are. Roll call, please, sir.
Fisher Burr.
President.
Mr. Klinger.
Here.
Mr. Wiki.
Here.
Mr. Malone.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lippman. Skip. You gotta unmute and tell me where you're at. Hold on, still muted.
There. My assistant did that.
Thanks. So where you at, Skip?
Plant City, Florida.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Good.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
President.
Mayor Heil.
Here. Thank you. The next item is Proclamation and Presentation. Seeing none, we will go down to the next item, which is visitors. Is there anyone that is visiting us tonight on this webcast who has something to bring to the commission that is not on the agenda? Andrew?
Anybody who's attending the meeting via Zoom, if you wish to make public comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature. Anybody attending via phone only can use star nine to raise your hand. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving on, I will take the approval of our current our agenda for tonight. Skip is making a motion, but unmute yourself, Skip.
Push the red button, Skip. Or don't.
You're still muted, Skip. Front yard. There you go. How's that? I can hear you. Why does it keep going?
I don't know.
Okay, Skip, do you want to make a motion for the approval of our agenda? Yes, I move for approval of tonight's agenda for Wednesday. What is today, the 10th or 11th? As presented. Have a motion to approve. Do I have support?
Support, Commissioner Burr.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mr. Lippman.
Yes.
Mr. Malone.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. On that, on the next item on the agenda, I will take approval of the consent agenda, please. All right, I move for approval of tonight's consent agenda also for Wednesday, as presented. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Good. We have a motion to approve and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Mr. Malone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is the unfinished business section, and then we do have something there. The zoning district change 201 Broad Street, second reading. Will, I see you made it.
I am here. Thank you, Commissioners. Now, this is a second reading for a zoning district change at 201 Broad Street. The request was made by the future owner of the property, Elizabeth Houli, requested to change the zoning district from business office service to residential three zoning district. The future land use map identifies this property as business office service. The building has been vacant since August of 2018, when it was used for the Center of Health and Wellness, a healthcare provider. The zoning district change is being requested, so the use of the building can change from business office to residential use. The applicant is proposing a single-family residential use, which would be an adult foster care home. They propose to bring the property into compliance with the City of Sturgis zoning code, which would be screening and upgrades to the parking lot. The applicant's also going to be constructing in addition, doing some decks, you know, making the home in compliance with the adult foster care. The planning commission held a public hearing after February 16, and they made a recommendation to approve this to the city commission. I'll share my screen just to show you what we're doing. Here's 201 Newman. Currently, it's BOS. It's going to change to this purple, which would be R3, which would allow the adult foster care home. Here's a site plan. This is what the existing site looks like. It's got a large parking lot. Here's the existing structure that's there. They would be proposing to bring the parking area into compliance with zoning. They're going to add some screening on the north side of the property, construct in addition to the east side, put an Egress windows in the bedrooms, add a couple of barrier-free restrooms, put a living area on the north side, which would be outdoor living, like a deck with a ramp coming down. And happy to ask, answer any questions.
Oh, Will, I've got a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
I believe there's a basement in that building. Are they putting bedrooms in that basement, too?
No.
So everything's gonna be on the it's it's all the residents will be upstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Six bedrooms on the first floor.
Okay. Commissioner Good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about this at the first reading. And I understand the fact that an adult foster care facility cannot be located in a business zone and needs to be in a residential zone. And I see the improvements that they're planning on will accommodate that adult foster care facility. I have no reason to think that they won't complete that construction and changes. But I'm asking one thing. Is is there a chance that there can be a performance agreement on that? Like you put on special land uses where they have to accomplish a certain percentage of the work within a certain timeframe? Or is with is that not possible? Why don't I handle that one? Commissioner Good, I I don't think our zoning ordinance provides for that kind of control that would be done through a permitting process, but not not through a development agreement process. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. And as I said, we had quite a bit of discussion about this at the prior meeting, and so I would make a motion to accept this as the second reading as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Who seconded it?
Vice Mayor Mullins, second.
Thank you, sir. Before I ask for a roll call, Andrew, would you see if there's anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this topic?
Yes, anyone joining us in the Zoom meeting from the general public who wishes to make comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature at this time. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. So we have a motion by Commissioner Good, support by Commissioner Mullins. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lippman. Give me a thumbs up, Skip. You're muted. Okay. Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Moving to the new business section of our meeting, the first item on the agenda is Chamber of Commerce, use of the city logo request. Michael.
Thank you, Your Honor. Included in your packet is a letter from Michael Wilson, Executive Deck Director for the Sturgis Area Chamber of Commerce. And he is requesting use of the city logo for Sturgis Fest 2021. The letter kind of describes the reasoning, and we have 125th birthday coming up. Of course, I think you can see that Mr. Wilson is here joining us. So I guess I'll let him speak to his request. But I will say, I had a conversation with the city attorney and how we would handle this if approved, as he would draft draft a that would provide permission of permissions and some protections for the city as well. It's not something that we had drafted up. I think we would wait for your decision. So with that, I can put it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mike, welcome. Would you like to make comment on this?
Mayor Heil, Vice Mayor Mullins, Commissioners? Yes, we're looking at theming this year's Sturgis Fest, 125 years of Sturgis, and I'd like to use the city's logo and add not over the top of the logo, but somewhere below it, 125 years, Sturgis, 125 years. You know, add the 1896 to 2021, 125 years. And potentially use past logos and some of the past things we've used and and theme it as such. So in doing so, I reached out to Mr. Hughes to see how how we could go about doing that. And so here I am tonight, asking your asking humbly for your permission to use the logo so we can celebrate 125 years of Sturgis come July 28.
All right. Are there any questions from the Commissioners on this topic? Andrew, I see no hands. Do you see anything? Is there any questions from the public on this topic?
For members of the public, if you wish to ask a question, please use the raise hand feature. I see none from the public, but I do see Commissioner Good has.
Yeah, I just saw that, too. Commissioner Good.
I just wanted to mention that there is a word for that. Just like sesquicentennial or centennial, there's quasi-sentennial. Q U A, Q U I, centennial. So if you want to work that into the logo, Mike, go right ahead.
Fisher Good, could you please text that spelling to me? There's just no way I can.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
But there is a word, I thought.
All right, good to know. It's a good trivia question. We'll use that.
All right. Any other questions for Mike or Mike or Mike, both Mikes on this, use of the logo? Roger, do you have any comments on this? To to inform the commission on what the procedures are possibly going to be or what the what you were going to write for him?
What I would envision doing is typically referred to as a license agreement that spells out how, in this case, the chamber can use the logo, what kind of controls the city has in terms of approving or disapproving and proposed use, and typically a length of time that they can use it. So that, in a sense, a working agreement where we would authorize on a limited basis to the chamber the the rights to use our logo.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Any other questions at this point for either the Mikes or Roger? If not, what say the commission on this topic?
Yeah, and I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a limited license agreement to the Sturgis Area Chamber of Commerce for use of the city logo and the 2021 Sturgis Fest branding and marketing, subject to legal review and approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Mullins. Do we have support?
Support.
I see. I think Mr. Smith got that one. We have support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins. Mr. Lippman.
Give a thumbs up. Yep.
I think Skip was the guy.
I think he said yes.
Yep. Mr. Wiki.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. The next item on our agenda is Five Lakes Coffee, and again, use of the city logo request. Michael Hughes.
Thanks again, Your Honor. I don't know what the chances are of having two of these requests in one night, but here we are. So there was an email from Jared Smith of Five Lakes Coffee with a similar request. So they're looking at using, and we'll let Mr. Smith explain, but using the logo and the moniker Electric City. So it would be a similar situation where the city attorney would put together a limited license agreement if you approve. So with that, I can put it back to you, Your Honor, and if you'd like Jared to kind of give a summary of the project.
Okay. Jared, would you like? I would like to have you explain what you're looking to do to the commission, please.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Basically, every year, we often sit down and try to think of ideas, new ideas for either blends or something that we can do with our bags for coffee. And this year, one of the ideas, we're just sitting there thinking, and Electric City Blend came to mind. So it was just something that we thought would be fun to do. So we just thought, right now, it's just kind of an idea phase, but we thought we would come to you guys and see if that was a possibility. Don't know if we'd incorporate something where we talk about the city, you know, put some facts in about the city or something. Just thought it'd be kind of a cool thing to do because it's where we started and a lot of where our success comes from is the community of Sturgis. So I thought it was kind of a neat idea. So really, it's in the idea. We haven't even, you know, we haven't really put anything on paper. Wanted to start with just seeing if that was a possibility, something that you guys thought would work and be a good idea.
Thank you, Jared. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Jared or Michael on this topic?
Commissioner Good has his hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we just heard from the city attorney, one of the phrases he utilized in telling us about that was a specific period of time. So Jared, when you do these specialty blends, they they phase out after a period of time, do they not?
They they could, or, you know, this could be something that we could could be ongoing, too. So it could be done either way.
Okay, so if we were to allow a licensing agreement for the logo to Five Lakes, would we leave it open-ended? That would be the question.
I mean, we'd really be open to anything. We could do a set timeframe. And then we'd come back and we could, you know, you could renew it. You know, we just want to make sure, you know, when we order coffee bags, we have to order them in the thousands to get them printed.
Right.
We just have to, you know, make some projection on sales and make sure that the agreement would be long enough that we don't have bags that aren't used if we weren't able to renew it.
So it would depend on your it would depend on your blend and your roaster as to whether or not you had good sales or mediocre sales, right?
I thought the name would sell it by itself.
Yeah, okay.
I could talk to the roaster, too.
Roger, do you want to sort of answer a little bit that question that Commissioner Good had for either a set date with renewal or leave it open? How would you address that?
Couple of different ways we could handle that. One would be to allow printing of the blend bags, you know, for a period of two years, and and then they could sell them until that supply was exhausted. We could set it up where, you know, it's a separate time during which they can sell, and we could build in a renewal option, subject to, you know, review by both the city and by Five Lakes. There's various ways we can do that. Where we're where we're dealing with our product, I think we need to be careful that we provide an opportunity to Five Lakes to certainly reasonably sell their inventory so they don't get stuck with that. But I I think I think there are ways around that. And I, you know, depending on what the direction they want to go, I think we could come up with a way to structure them.
Thank you, Roger. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared, working off of Commissioner Good's there, perhaps the name would be Electric City quasi-sentennial, just a suggestion.
Not sure if my customers would get that, but maybe I'll give that some thought.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions for either Jared or Michael on this agenda item from the commission? If not, do we have any questions from our audience? Andrew?
Once again, for those joining via the Zoom meeting that wish to make a public comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. It seems that there's no more questions. What say the commission on this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a limited license agreement with Five Lakes Coffee to use the city logo and their branding and marketing of the Electric City Blend, subject to legal review and approval.
You have a motion by Vice Mayor Mullins. Do I have support?
Commissioner Good will support that.
Thank you, sir. We have support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Lippman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Mr. Klinger.
Yes.
Mr. Wiki.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all.
And will we all get a complimentary one-pound bag?
I might get in a little trouble for bribery if I do that. I'm sure we could do something.
All right.
This wasn't recorded, was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then then, no, no, you won't get anything.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Claire? I noticed you had something on here. I saw that out. I saw that laugh. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the DWSRF Engineering Proposal. Michael.
Thank you, Your Honor. Provided quite a bit of information in the packet about the what's called DWSRF program. We're interested in a drinking water infrastructure grant. The DWSRF is a loan program through Eagle State of Michigan, I should say. I've got a lot of acronyms here. So Eagle is the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and and Energy. And this year, they have a few new programs that we're interested in, one of which was the drinking water infrastructure grants, which provides 30% 30% ground, the total project cost. So fairly substantial. One of the things is that this is a new program, and based on our conversations with Eagle, they really don't know if this grant program will be available next year. So much like many other communities, we're we're interested in this grant funding for projects, and some of which we're mandated to address, like lead service replacement. One of the requirements of the grant program is that you participate in a loan program. So unless you participate in the DWRS program, SRF program, you can't receive the grants. The loan program requires what they call a project plan, and we kind of broke down the elements of that and the information that we included. But it's it's a fairly involved process and requires hiring an engineering consultant to be able to do much of that work. We spent a little bit of time investigating if we'd be able to meet the timeframe, which is July 1, that we have to submit a project plan. And there's actually quite a bit of pressure right now from Eagle to make a decision. So we have to make a decision tonight whether we're going to move forward. And frankly, if we didn't make a decision tonight on what we want to do, we probably wouldn't have enough time, or at least Fishback wouldn't have enough time to complete the project plan. And so what we included for our scope of work for the project that we're proposing is main and service line replacement on St. Is um, main and service line replacement on St. Joseph and East Hatch. And then service line replacement on North Clay and Park Streets. Our total estimated project cost is a little over one point one million dollars. And so if you can imagine, if we were to receive the maximum amount of the grant. We're looking at a little over thirty, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of budget, and I apologize, there's an error, um. It says in the manager's report that uh, the St. Joseph Street, East Hatch Street projects were budgeted in the current fiscal year. St. Joe is budgeted in twenty twenty-two, I believe, and then East Hatch is in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we do budget, or we're starting to budget each year in allocation for replacing lead line services. And um, that depends on a whole lot of things, what projects that we're planning and then also. What service lines need to be repaired, new mandates, fairly new mandate from Eagle is that if we have a. Um, a service line break that we have to replace that, uh, which is, is new. Uh, in the past, the property owner would be replacing, responsible for replacing their service line. So now we've got to replace that all the way uh, into the house. Um, so uh, the question before you tonight is, do you want to move forward with? Um, hiring Fish, Fishback to prepare a project plan. Participate in the loan program and potentially receive a grant. And uh, earlier this afternoon, um, because Fishback was working quickly to decide if they. Could accomplish this and uh, provide a proposal. Um, that we received that today and reviewed it. There were a few minor changes and then. I sent that out to you this afternoon. I can um, try to share the proposal with you. I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to look at that. All right, you should be able to see that. Um, scope of services are really just the elements of, that are required for the. Um, project plan. And you can see the professional service fees here is at thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, um, since the mayor left the room, um, may I speak?
Mayor's back.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it appears to me that Fishback says they could do this by July one. I, I don't have any reason to um, dispute that comment. Uh, the, the question is uh, thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars. That is an investment with a risk as to whether or not it will pay off. With the state awarding us anything, whether it be ten percent up to thirty percent. Is that what I understand? Uh, they have an, they have an opportunity to award anything in between zero and thirty?
Yeah, there's, I don't think Barry chimed in, um. I don't know that there's anything that says that they're required to. Um, fund the max thirty percent.
Okay, well, I read through the Eagle document that you included with the uh, packet. And I, uh, first of all, I'll say that uh, there is no disputing that Eagle is thorough. Okay, uh, there are more subsets and uh, uh, requirements within that application procedure. Not all of which apply to our project, but nonetheless, a considerable amount of verbiage in there. With regard to the present worth of future dollars and uh, the project impact. The climate impact on the project, et cetera. Um, and so after having read that, I would say. The use of a consultant service such as Fishback would certainly be um. Instrumental in the potential for an award. Uh, not that Barry isn't qualified, but he's got some other things he has to do too. So um, I think that the thirty-four-two. If we were to be awarded the full thirty percent, and you talked about that being three hundred grand or more. Uh, that's certainly a sound investment. Is the risk of the thirty-four-two something we want to do? I would say that uh, we know that both of those water projects, the water mains and St. Joseph's Street. Uh, is uh, well beyond its useful life. And uh, I have to say, I would be in favor of us uh, uh, moving forward with awarding this. Bid to Fishback at the thirty-four-two. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Uh, Barry? You have your hand raised?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner's goods, uh, the belief in my capabilities overall. I, I've never put together one of these project plans personally, so I mean, this is really falls into a consultant's hands. Much more so, if you've seen one of these project plans before and the city has done. Uh, SRF funding uh, project plans as well as DWRF. Project plans going back to, as far as I'm aware, back to two thousand and seven. SRF obviously in two thousand nine for the uh, expansion of the, basically the collection system. And then again in two thousand thirteen for the headwork, so it, it is involved and, and it is definitely not something I can scope out. And if Fishback thinks they can get it done, there are some time deadlines in there that they have to hit for us to make it, but. Um, you know, we're, we're going after, as Mike said, there's, there's several grant opportunities within all of these fundings. That the uh, that the state has put out there, uh, some of these we weren't eligible for, the disadvantaged community. Uh, apparently we're not, which was a, a nice chunk of change that the state had out there, but um. It, it is a good opportunity to kind of potentially relieve uh, ease some of our budgetary constraints on the water side.
Your honor?
Yes.
That, just an important piece of information is that um, we can. Um, exit the program at any time, even after we submit a project plan. Um, so as an example, if, if it's determined we don't receive grant funding, we could. Um, evaluate that time whether we want to continue and we wouldn't be obligated. Um, to the loan program, um, until we actually close on the loan. And so, just as an example, if, if between now and then, we find out that the state's going to provide funding in future years. And we don't get grant funding, we could um, we could step back and then submit the project plan. And I, I, my memory is that the project plan is good for five years. And, and so that we do have options, um, if, for, if for some reason we don't receive the grant funding this first round. I, I um, wasn't listening to a webinar this afternoon and the, I mean. I would say that there are many, many communities trying to give this money. And so um, it, it wouldn't surprise me if, if for some reason we don't get grant money. Um, they, they did talk about, you know, that, basically what they said is the legislature is. Um, favorable about considering future years, whatever that means. Um, so I, I think it does make sense, especially the flexibility that we can remove ourselves, regroup. And then um, the project plan isn't completely lost, we could consider, you know, putting in the, a project for future years. Um, the other thing to think about is that with capital projects like this. The way our rate design is set up, we, we would need to consider borrowing money or incurring debt. And one way to do that would be this loan program. I, I do, I would say that, you know, but not for the grant, we, we probably wouldn't be considering it, but if we are doing it work. Um, it's not um, at least a bad idea to consider the loan program.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Barry, you have your hand raised again?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Mike said, you know, if we do do the project plan, it is, and we complete it. It is good for five years, if the, if they decide to do the, the drinking water infrastructure grants. Again, in any of the future years, it would be, it would basically be done, um, and we could presumably submit it right away. As far as the grant is a breakdown that Commissioner Good talked about, as far as uh, percentages. It really speaks, it says the grants will be capped at the lesser of thirty percent of project costs or two million dollars. So obviously, there's much larger projects out there that could be done, but it doesn't sound like it would be like a ten percent or fifteen percent. Type scenario. It would be either thirty percent or you're not getting it, as long as you're up to two million.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Uh, Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, your honor. Um, is Fishback pretty confident that they can meet the deadline? Do they have a guarantee on that?
Michael?
I, you know, they're not guaranteeing it. Um, in some ways, I would say that they're. Wow, they're doing us a favor. Um, they did, wh- what happened was, we invited them to an ITA meeting with Eagle. Um, they had their staff there that primarily works on these programs. And then we had the staff that we've done work on and, and mostly we've done. Um, the Brick Street Reconstruction with Fishback, so that it was kind of this team. We listened to, you know, some of the requirements and, and of course, you know, they are very familiar. And um, they took some time to discuss whether they thought it was feasible. So I think, and what they're telling us is that it is feasible and they think they can meet the deadline. But I think they would stop short of guaranteeing it.
Thank you, Michael.
So if they don't make the deadline and we're automatically out of the running. Is there any refunding on that?
I don't think there's, I don't think there would be a refund. No, we would have a project plan that we could submit in the future. Um, I guess I would say that I don't think they're going to commit, you know, to meeting the deadline. Um, with the mindset that they're not going to meet that. Um, I also don't think that they will put a guarantee on it or refund any money.
So the only upside is that we could use that uh, report in the future for future projects. If, if they are indeed, uh, continued on to a second year plus.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say that that's a, that would be a worse scenario.
Well, I'm a pessimist, so yeah.
Yeah, I know, and I, I think that, I, I guess I'll, I'll just say that. You know, they, they took a, some time to really decide if they could do it. And I think part of the decision was that the team that normally does it is going to need some help from, you know, the people that we normally work with. They had that discussion and then they, they said that they could meet that timeline. I, I just think it's, you know. They're stopping short of some absolute guarantee. Um, I, I will say this, um. They want to continue to do work for us.
That's a good incentive.
We're a very, I mean, we're a very good customer and because um, I mean, if we think back to St. Joe. Because they have been good at meeting deadlines and completing projects. You know, we've shifted to them for this, the street utility work on St. Joe. And because, you know, it felt like um, F and D's workload was, was at a max.
Okay, thanks. Uh, just one more question. It doesn't pertain to this uh, particular contract item, but. I see there it says that uh, you've done a hundred and ninety uh, replacement of service lines so far in the city? It says a hundred and ninety people are directly served by the water services replaced.
Is that in the, Commissioner Burr, is that in the ITA?
That's on the project information. On the intent to apply form.
That mean, that may mean that there's a hundred and ninety people within that project area.
No, there are only uh, sixty-three, I believe that were.
Oh, okay.
That were reportedly uh, in line for that service, if I'm not mistaken, Barry.
You have a page number on the ITA that you're referencing, Commissioner Burr?
Uh, fifty-five, page uh, one or two.
Page one of two, okay.
Fifty-five was the number of page. I have it up on the screen.
Okay, I, I, I do see it now, um. And while I supplied a, a large percentage of what went into the ITA, I really do not know. Oh, it's site, it's services versus people, okay? So there is a difference. Uh, you make an assumption on the number of people at each residence. Um, so you had uh, sixty-three and typically we multiply the number by three.
Okay, I thought that we had done an awful lot of them for. Uh, such a short time.
Well, and we probably have, I, I, you know, I could probably provide a number as to where we are. It's an ever-moving target. Uh, it seems like every week we're replacing something, um, but yeah, I mean, we did a, a number of them. Just North Lakeview alone had forty, I think, thirty-eight to forty, something services in there.
Mm-hmm.
Pleasant had uh, seven, Geraldine had uh, uh, depending on how you want to look at it. Whether or not you're counting it as from the water main all the way into the house, or whether it's the water main to the existing service. Uh, I believe there was, let's see, it was twenty-seven. And it was upwards of thirty on that project as well, so it adds up in a hurry, plus all the ones that Public Services has done. Which they did thirty-three or thirty-four last year. So yeah, we're getting, we're making some headway. Um, unfortunately, we're spending a lot of money to do it too.
All right, okay. Thanks for that uh, explanation, Barry.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. Uh, Barry, you do have some more comment? Your hand is raised?
Oh, sorry, um, I don't remember it now.
All right, um, I did see Commissioner Smith had his hand raised, but now he's dropped it. Commissioner Smith, do you still have a comment? No, okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor Mullins had his hand raised at one time during his topic. Do you still have a, a question or comment? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Barry, go ahead and make your comment.
Yeah, I was, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, to Commissioner Burr's question regarding. Whether or not they can do this or not, they did say specifically, typically project plans take six to nine months to complete from start to finish. And right now we have four, so yes, it is going to be a challenge, but it's, it sounds like they're willing to commit to that challenge. Um, if you work back into some of their terms and conditions in their professional services agreement. Um, there are some uh, things regarding termination possibilities. And consequential damages and legal expenses, so there, there may be a way to cut it short. But I mean, if they proceeded and got eighty, I, I'm, I'm. You know, I'm of the opinion that Mike is, you know, they spent a lot of time thinking about this before they even said, yeah, we're going to do it. And you know, to complete the project plan, it's going to be good for five years. Maybe there isn't another grant program, but there is a loan program and. It would basically account for that possibility.
Oh, I, I guess I could mention maybe a possible upside. Oh, I, I guess I could mention maybe a, a possible upside. They. They've referenced loan forgiveness a couple of times, but we don't know. How or under what condition you receive loan forgiveness. Um, that could happen. On top of the green, or it could just, you know, if we don't get a grant, it could be loan forgiveness. Um, trying to help unders, you know, have them help us understand what that is and how you did it. I, I don't really know. They'll tell us when we get there, apparently.
Uh, Commissioner Good?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, uh, indicated that the project plan is, uh, were, uh, good for five years. And that would be that thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollar, uh, consultant fee, is that correct? So that's, uh, sixty-hundred, sixty-eight hundred and forty dollars a year. So, you know, if you look at it that way, it's, uh, it's not like the risk is overwhelming. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Good. Any other comments on this agenda item? See, none from the commission. Are there any from our audience? Andrew?
Those in the audience, if there's anyone participating via the Zoom meeting, if you wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature at this time. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'm reading a note here for real quick. Oh, just wanna wait. All right, um, seeing there are more, no more comments from our, our commission nor from the audience. What say the commission on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move the Sturgis City Commission to approve the contract proposal. With Fishback for development of a DW L R F project plan. In the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars as presented.
Yeah, the motion to approve, do I have support? And I have support by Commissioner Malone. Uh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Mullins?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman? Thumbs up? Okay, and Mayor Heil?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the Police and Fire Department HVAC system upgrade. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, bring to you tonight for your consideration, uh. Part of our capital improvement plan, this, this item has been, uh, been on the capital improvement plan. I wanna kind of preface my, my. Information, we've actually been on, this has been on the plan for a few years. We pushed it. Uh, about three years ago because we were able to make some improvements to make the system keep operating. Um, but currently, the, uh, the thermostatic controls and heating and cooling control valves in the building operate on a pneumatic system. We have an air compressor that, uh, that makes those systems work. Uh, it is a very dated. Type of, uh, operation and it can be troublesome and required a significant amount of maintenance. Um, as I, as I said, we did, we did, uh, budget this fiscal year to, uh. Replace those pneumatic systems with a low voltage electronic equivalent as part of our capital improvement plan. The budgeted project included the replacement of all pneumatic thermostats throughout the facility and the replacement of pneumatic actuators. Uh, on the valves connected to all thirty-four fan coil units and the makeup air system in the building. Um, currently, the building does utilize the Niagara Building Automation System that we have as, as well in City Hall. Uh, in the auditorium and is, uh, actually just about finished being installed now at the Doyle Center as well. Um, the plat- that platform has proven to be beneficial in its ability to diagnose system problems and maintain and update, uh, operation schedules. With the addition of the new electronic thermostats and actuators, additional data and control, um, will be added to the, uh. BAS system allowing for greater accuracy in temperature, uh, and temperature reads than the. Excuse me, uh, allowing for greater accuracy in temperature reads than the existing pneumatic systems as well as improved scheduling, diagnosing and troubleshooting. Um, additionally, installation of these, uh, electronic thermostats will improve overall climate control and comfort in the building. They offer a, a number of additional data points that will be available on the BAS system. We'll be able to. Look at that right from the computer, uh, and help figure out where, where or if we have a problem. Um, we received a, a quote from Hable, uh, and requ- and we are requesting a, a bid waiver for this project. Um, Hable is our sole source provider, uh, for the existing BAS platform and continues to provide value-based practical solutions. Uh, to meet the needs, uh, of the city facilities. The base bid, uh, from Hable was sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars to complete, uh, and complete supply and install. The new thermostats and supply the new actuators. Uh, Hable staff. Uh, also included three alter- alternatives, uh. In dealing with the installation of the actuator controls and the valves, the water valves, uh, for heating and cooling. Uh, alternate one would be to, uh, install new, new actuators as well as the, uh. Is removal and installation of the water valves, uh, for each of the fan coil units. Alternate two installs new actuators on the existing valves. And alternate three, uh, involves foregoing the actuators and installing transducers, uh, for the existing pneumatic valves. Basically, alternate three would be staying with some pneumatic systems, which is what we're trying to get away from. Um, we were, we're recommending, staff is recommending alternate one with the additional cost of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the contract. To have in, Hable install the new valves on the heating and cooling water lines at each unit. This option provides the most up-to-date, uh. An integrated system at a marginal cost difference from alternate two. Um, as recommended, the total project cost would be seventy-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, we budgeted, uh, this fiscal year sixty thousand dollars and based on the, uh, recommended total project cost. We are also requesting a budget amendment of twenty thousand dollars, uh, in the general fund capital outlay line. Uh, to cover the additional cost plus a small amount for contingency.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Um, are there any questions from the commissioner on this item topic? Commissioner Burr?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so is the heating cooling system not working?
Uh, it works. I wouldn't call it, uh.
It's not new.
No, no, it's not new. It's not new, but it, it, we, we've had, we've had continued problems, uh, with, with the systems throughout the buildings.
Like, uh, is it, are we continually calling service people to come and fix something or? Uh, it's only nine years old, so that's one of my concerns is that we've got a system that obviously. Uh, wasn't built well enough to last very long. Uh, are we changing this out just because it's a pneumatic system?
We're, in, in the, the, the heating cooling system is more than nine, nine years old. It's been, it's been added on to. Uh, for a couple of decades now. I know the makeup air system in that building was installed, I believe, in the early nineties. Um, uh, it's, it's. We just have problems with certain areas not heating, certain areas overheating or overcooling. Uh, and that's, that's due to the, the, the nature of the pneumatic controls.
So you're saying it's not, it says that, uh, Police and Fire Department. Building has utilized the Niagara Building Automation System since twenty-eleven. So the, uh, heating and cooling, uh. Was there before that and they just added down the system to control it?
Correct. Yeah, they, they installed that as part of, part of, uh, a previous performance contract. That, uh, yeah, basically allowed for scheduling of the air conditioning or scheduling of the heat, uh, or hot waters. Yeah. That's correct.
Okay, and did you say, did you know how old this, uh, heating system was, heating cooling system?
Well, the pneumatic systems have been there, uh, I'm guessing. It's been decades, probably thirty or forty years. We, we had, we had to replace the compressor for that pneumatic system. Uh, when I, when I started here, uh, as a matter of fact, because we had, we were having problems. Uh, we did a bunch of maintenance to that system and we were able to, that's why we were able to push this, this recommendation. For about three years, uh, we were able to, I guess, limp by.
Okay, I was a little concerned that we were trying to replace something. It's only nine years old. Uh, mostly because it's pneumatic, but if you're saying it's been there thirty years, I guess it's due.
Yeah, that's correct. Now, the, 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 the controls that are there have been there, uh, I, I couldn't tell you exactly how long, but they've, they've been there. Since the equipment was installed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Vice Mayor Mullins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Dan, how you doing?
Good, Jeff, how are you?
Good, good. Hey, just, um, the, the BAS system that we're, that you're proposing. This has been on that platform since twenty-eleven, the BAS platform, correct, for the controls and whatnot?
I think that the Police and Fire and the Auditorium were added, uh, in twenty-eleven as part of the performance contract with, uh, with another company, yeah. Basically, allow, yeah, allowing for the control of the scheduling of the boiler and the air conditioning and those things.
And then back in, uh, I think it's October eighth meeting, we, we approved for the Doyle Center to have, uh, an upgrade. The same and we had thirty thousand dollars on that. What's, what's, uh, what are the differences in the systems between the two buildings?
Well, basically, uh, Doyle Center operates, it, it, it heats, uh, we have seven, seven different, uh, furnace air conditioner units. Like you would see in, in a, in a residence, like a residential type, uh, furnace air conditioning unit. And then we have. Uh, we have the new package unit that runs the, 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 uh, the iron mill room. As well as a couple of, uh, large freestanding, uh, thermal cycler units that provide the heat, uh, for the majority of the building in the winter time. Um, the, the biggest difference is the total number of units. We have, we have thirty-four fan coil units. Uh, at the Police and Fire Department and these units are, they're in the ceiling, they're, uh. They're kind of tucked everywhere. It's, it's gonna be a lot more labor intense, uh, on this project. Especially with the replacement of the, uh, the, the hot water valves and the cold water valves, uh, chilled water valves, I should say. Um, it, it's gonna be, it's, it's, in, it's gonna be an intense labor project. What is where a lot of the cost is coming, uh, on this.
Okay, and I see in the, in the budget, there's a, the HVAC controls was budgeted at fifteen, but then there was heat and air system at forty-five. That's where the sixty is coming from, I'm, I'm guessing.
And when, yeah, when we originally talked to Hable about this, uh. Like I said, about three years ago, three and a half years ago, they, they, they kind of thrown us a budgetary number of fifteen thousand, or I'm sorry, uh, forty-five thousand. Uh, on this project, uh, taking a, taking a kind of quick thirty thousand foot view of the project. That's where the forty-five came from. We had, we had added the fifteen because we knew there was gonna be the valve replacements. Um, so we've kind of budgeted for that, but we missed the mark on the overall project once they, once they got into it and started doing the design.
Okay, and I guess the only question I have on that is the, the added portion that was in there for the, um. Uh, the fourteen, the alternates that you have down there. Because the total cost was for the upgrades in the purchasing of the actuators. But then the installation is what we're talking about for the alternate, uh, one, two and three, correct? I mean, that's just installation only of the pieces that we're buying from them?
Correct. It's the, it's the removal of the existing pneumatically controlled valves and the installation of those valves. Like I said. It's, it's gonna be, it, they're, they're taking a shot in the dark because they really don't know exactly how. We know it's gonna be labor intense, like I said. And that, that's, yeah, it's the installation of those valves on those systems.
Okay, and then. Lastly, on the proposal, when we're looking at alternates one, two and three, the proposal three is showing that it would, it would actually be. It would reduce the overall cost by sixty-seven hundred dollars and forty-four cents.
Correct.
Particular one, you said that they, uh, that we would, I guess my question is, is, uh. What, that would also, um, away some of the purchasing that we're doing of those actual actuators and valves then, correct? And we're using the one we currently have, all of them?
Uh, well, correct. It would be replacing some of the pneumatic actuators with, uh, the pneumatic transducers, uh. And in essence, we're still using a pneumatic system to control those valves, opening and closing, uh, which is what we're trying, trying to get away from.
And all those valves are as old as the act- actual system itself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, any other questions for Dan on this item, agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, John.
I don't really have a question. I just wanna follow along with, uh, uh, maybe some of the sentiment that was coming from Commissioner Burr. And just, uh, make a statement that, uh, that building, the Police and Fire Building. Was built in, uh, the mid to late thirties, nineteen thirties. And it's been around for a long time and some commission in the future. Is gonna have to figure out whether or not they wanna stop putting seventy-five thousand dollars into the HVA system. Uh, whether or not they wanna stop putting, uh, fifty thousand dollars into this item and that item. And so, uh, I just wanted to mention that, that, uh, you know, in today's world. Uh, we're trying to buy a new fire truck. One of the fire, one of the, um, items that was important in the fire truck. Is will it fit in our building that was built in the nineteen thirties? So, you know, it's, it's someone that's gonna have to think about that in the future. And, uh, I just wanted to bring that up and, uh, stir up the pot, if you will. Um, but, uh, you know, if, if in fact, we're using a pneumatic system. That has valves that are three decades old, actuators that are three decades old. And not providing a comfortable heat and cooling environment within that building. I think, uh, you know, we need to do the right thing by that building, so. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John, for the comment. Um, Andrew, will you, will you see if there's anyone in our audience who'd have like, like a ma- comment on this, uh, agenda item?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, anybody attending the meeting, the Zoom meeting, uh, wishes to make public comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature now. We'll recognize you for public comment. I see nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew, and seeing no other hands being raised, what say the commission? And there are two motions on this agenda item. What say the commission on the first motion?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Uh, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a bid waiver for, 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 for the proposal. Of Hable with alternate one for improvements and upgrades to the mechanical systems and building controls at the Sturgis Police Fire Department Building. In the total amount of seventy-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars as presented.
I have mo- a motion to approve by Commissioner Plano, do we have support?
Support, Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Good, you're muted. Okay, thumbs up. Commissioner Lippman?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
And Mayor Heil?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a budget amendment, increasing the general fund capital outlay line item. By twenty thousand dollars.
Have mo- motion by Commissioner Klinger, uh, do I have support?
Support, Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman?
Thumbs up.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins?
Yes.
And Mayor Heil?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts restroom renovation. Uh, Sheila, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor Heil and Commissioners. Good evening, everybody. Um, so as you know, the restrooms on the main floor of the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts are long overdue for renovation and upgrades, and this is the next project for improvements to the facility. It is our belief that now is the ideal time to complete this project, given the current limited usage level of the facility due to COVID nineteen restrictions. The current toilets and urinals are original to the building as are other items such as the stall walls and the plumbing and fixtures. Um, they've been maintenance concerns for several years. The tile and ceramic block are also original and cosmetic items such as wallpaper and carpeting in the women's restroom and the family restroom are, uh, ripping and definitely need replacement. Um, in addition, the family restroom, while meant for handicapped access, is not compliant with current ADA standards. It lacks the necessary wheelchair clearances, fixtures, and an automatic door opener. Renovation of the main floor restrooms was included in the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty one and budgeted at one hundred and sixty five thousand, five hundred. This budget was based on a high level estimate put together for us by Bison Associates Engineers and Architects in early twenty twenty for the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs Project Grant. The city was awarded in September a grant of thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars from MCACA towards the upgrades requiring a one-to-one fund match. After being awarded the grant funding, we contacted Frederick Construction to develop a more detailed project budget and cost proposal for the project with a design build concept. Under design build, one contractor is responsible for handling both project design and eventual construction, allowing for a more cohesive working relationship between the architects and builders and providing the city one responsible party if there are concerns or changes during construction. Frederick is a MyDeal approved indefinite scope, indefinite delivery discretionary contractor and has worked for the city on projects in the past. After consultation with city staff on the scope of work, Frederick prepared a detailed renovation budget for the project of two hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety two cents. This budget includes design, labor, material, and project management, as well as a ten percent contingency for the project. A copy of the budget is included in your pocket. A final cost proposal and contract for design on the project is also included in your packet. The design portion of the project is twenty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Through the design process, the overall project budget will be finalized and construction contract brought back to the commission at a future reading. Staff and Frederick will work to be at or below the current two hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and eighty eight dollars and ninety two cent overall project budget. We recommend the commission approve the contract with Frederick Construction for design of this project in the amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We are requesting a bid waiver for this project due to Frederick Construction being a MyDeal approved ISID contractor. As stated previously, these design costs are included in the two hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty eight dollars, nine and two cent project budget. The current source of revenue for the project in the Sturgis Young Council for the Arts budget includes eighty three thousand transferred from Capital Reserve Fund, twenty thousand from the Road to Restoration Campaign fundraiser from twenty nineteen, and the MCACA project grant award of thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars for a total of a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and twelve. Currently, the gap is approximately a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars between the latest project budget and available revenue. The Sturgis Young is currently planning a capital funding campaign to commence in the next month in continuation of the Road to Restoration and, uh, with the goal being to raise enough funds to cover all or most of the deficit for this project and additional capital improvements. Any questions?
Okay, I just want to make sure you're done. Uh, Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Mullins?
You missed a man raised? Yes, sir. Thank you. Hi, Sheila.
Hello.
Um, the bathrooms, you, you're, you're, are you talking about just the upstairs bathrooms or are you talking about all? Because in the Frederick, they have four restrooms and a changing room.
So we are specifically talking about the main floor restrooms. Um, I know it sounds like four, but what they're talking about is the standalone family restroom. The women's restroom has actually two sections of restrooms, so that would be considered the four rooms. Cause there's, in the women's restroom, which you have not been in, um, there are three separate rooms and then the men's restroom for a total of four room.
And what's the changing room?
So in between the, uh, the two stall areas of the women's restroom is what we would consider a changing room. Um, I don't know that anybody's ever used it to change diaper in there because there's no place to actually do that. Um, the family restroom and the women's restroom currently have the full down changing station.
They've got a whole little community in there, don't they?
Something like that.
Well, talking about the money of it now, you, you've got, there's one sixty five, five budgeted for the upstairs bathrooms. The math that you're doing there, you're saying that Fish, is it Fishbeck, right?
Frederick.
Or Frederick, they have the, um, uh, the thing estimated at two hundred and forty nine thousand total, including the design, I understand all that stuff. Now, when you take that design and, uh, their total at two forty nine and subtract the one forty you're talking about, at least one oh eight. Wouldn't one oh eight come out of the one sixty five, five? Because you're talking about fundraising for the balance of it? Isn't that what is budgeted for there? I see, I see Holly shaking your head, but maybe.
I will defer the answer to Holly, actually.
Okay.
You're muted.
Listening. So, yeah, so we, it was budgeted at one, at one sixty five, five. That was based on the grant. Yeah. Yeah.
So, so the, once the two forty nine, you know, if that's what it comes in at from Frederick and we apply those other things, the grant, the fundraising from the Road to Restoration, those others for one oh, uh, for one forty, the balance of one oh eight to, to come up with, and she's saying that we're gonna get that through fundraising. What is the one sixty five, five then? Are we not using?
Well, we're, no, well, the cost of the project, I mean, the one sixty five, five was what our budget was based on. Just like our contribution revenue that we had, we're estimating when we do the budget process. We don't have all of our sources of revenue nailed down at the time when we're doing, you know, when we're doing our, our budget. But we're going to ask, but you're using an estimate. So we use the estimate on expenditures. Likewise, we're using an estimate on contributions. These, the one, what we're talking about are the, are the concretely identified sources that we have in place that we know that we have. But we still, the budget was still based on estimating revenue that we were going to raise that, that isn't totally raised yet.
Okay, so that, that one sixty five wasn't allocated from some, it wasn't allocated to this from anywhere yet?
No, it was just an estimate of the cost of the project based on the, the most recent information that we had. That, like Sheila said, was a very high level, pretty quick estimation, um, of the cost of the project that we wanted, that we needed in order to submit for the grant from a CAC.
So in, in the end, we're, we're talking about having nothing except for the transfer from the gen, what was it, the capital fund? Is that what our goal is? The eighty, was that eighty thousand?
We have eighty three budgeted from Capital Reserve to help fund this project that was already budgeted from that. And then we had the, and then we have the grant, and then we have some carryover funds from the Road to Restoration from last year. And so, you know, in order to fund the entire project, there's a gap between those, between what the, the sources we totally have identified and the cost of the project.
Okay, so your idea, your, your idea, Holly, then is to have no more than the eighty three come out of the taxpayers', uh?
Be nice. Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that's the goal, but I mean, if we have to transfer more, we'll come later and after that.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, any other questions from the commission to either for Sheila and this, uh, uh, agenda item?
Right, so. Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, um, when we get through design, if, if you decide to move forward, I think that, um, we'll be able to firm up that budget and bring it at, back. And then we'll have, you know, better sense of what that gap is and, and maybe have moved along in fundraising. Um, so that's why it makes sense to do the design work first.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Uh, Commissioner Vice Mayor Mullins has a, uh, another comment.
Yeah, just one more. I noticed that in there, there's also the downstairs bathroom, uh, budgeted for next year. Is, is there any, will there be any, uh, advantage to using them while they're there for design purposes on that as well and getting any kind of lesser amount when we come up next year for a design on that portion?
Dan, you want to, I mean, we.
So I, I, I think to answer your question, um, we're going to have a pretty good idea because they are mirror images. They basically are stacked, one on top of the other. They're exactly the same upper and lower. I, I would assume, uh, that, I, I say assume, that the, the, they would, we, we could, we could talk with, uh, Frederick, uh, and GH Forbes is the, uh, is the architecture firm, uh, that will do the design. Uh, I don't know how much additional it would actually be that they're going to have a pretty good idea. The, the downfall is plumbing on the upstairs level bathrooms is all visible and it's in, in between the floor heights. Whereas in the, in the lower level, it's all going to be in the concrete, so they, uh, I'm not sure how much savings there would be trying to.
Just wondering if we have to pick twenty four now and then twenty four for next year to do it again for the same layout of the bathrooms minus the concrete and whatever, but.
They'll, they'll have to submit new con- construction drawings for that space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Do, do those, those things ever expire? Is what I'm asking. I, I don't know if.
They're usually, um, they, I mean, a building permit is for one year. We locally granted an extension. I'm not certain about the state. Um, we could ask the question, but I, I agree with Dan. I don't see a, a lot of, you know, like savings if they were to do the design at the same time. Um, and, and for what it's worth, um, the architect that Frederick is using is someone we haven't used before. Dan did a reference check. Um, but this is someone that, you know, Frederick partners up with, you know, on projects and, and that, um, I think they've had good success with. Uh, but it's not someone we've, other than doing reference checks that I think came back well. We haven't, um, worked with them before.
Um, and if I may too, part of the other part of that, Jeff, is that for next year, we want to kind of, uh, put in with the lower level restroom designs, the concession closet upgrades. Um, since the plumbing is a lot more connected with those two projects, so it might actually have a larger scope uh, for that. So that's probably where it would behoove us to put it off another year for that design process.
Well, thank you for the info.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, did we get any other bids on this other than these people?
Uh, well, Dan, I mean, part of it is that the Fredericks, we went with Fredericks because they are part of the MyDeal. So that's why we're requesting a bid waiver.
Yeah, I, I can, I could jump in that. So Frederick, this is a design build and part of what they'll do is bid out the trade contracts. And, um, you know, they've indicated it would be basically open book. And what that means is they would, they would bid out, um, contractors. And, and the, and the hope is they might be able to use, and, and they have used local contractors. Um, and then what happens with MyDeal, that's a state purchasing program where they negotiate pricing. And so we have a, basically a pre-negotiated price for their design build or construction management services of ten percent, which includes overhead and profit. So they're really, um, sort of acting as, you know, they're a general contractor. They're going to bid out all the trades and other construction work, and then we'll be able to see that. Typically, in, in, we'll, we would bring that contract to you in the future. Um, but typically, we would have, um, input on that. And I think ultimately, they, they would be deciding which contractor, but they could show us what they're bidding and what those costs are. And so then those end up really being pass-throughs and then they're, they make the overhead and profit on it. Um, whether it's design bill or construction management, I like that because you could really see, you know, what the project is costing. Um, rather than with a general contractor, you really never know, you know, what exactly is behind the curtain. And of course, they're always building in contingencies too that may or may not be realized. In this contract, um, there will be an owner's contingency that, um, that, um, we'll be able to see all of that.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm really having a hard time wrapping my mind around the fact that one bathroom is going to cost about thirty thousand dollars more than I paid for my house.
So. Yeah. You know, it is shocking. It really is. And I think when we got the number from Vice, um, at one sixty five, that seemed like a big number. Um, but I will say, I mean, we're, the, I think the beauty of the design build and open book concept is you'll be able to see the numbers and, you know, their original estimate probably has, you know, some contingencies in it. I don't want to, you know, try to sell it as it's going to be less, but they're also estimating too, and they don't want to be, they don't want to be low. But, but yeah, um, I'm constantly amazed at the, at the cost of construction. But we'll be able to see when they bid and, and, um, what the pricing comes back at.
Okay.
That's it.
And part to answer, to go, uh, Dan and I have talked about this with them, um, building material costs have, uh, gone up considerably during the pandemic. Uh, so that's part of why the cost came in a lot higher. Um, we worked with Frederick to have them be working on all three main restrooms simultaneously to lower our labor costs. Um, so they've been really, we've been working with them to get a really good, you know, overall number for that. But also, you know, um, automatic door openers, uh, working with, you know, um, older fixtures and moving to touchless fixtures that, um, will help us, you know, maintain the, the sanitization of the spaces for our patrons in light of the pandemic and stuff like that. So these, you know, materials are not inexpensive in the slightest.
Uh, Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quarter of a million dollars for the bathrooms. Uh, uh, like everyone says, it's a, an amazing number. The, the question I have is, uh, directed to Sheila. Um, you want to see the design, uh, process begun so that you know the project is underway and it, um, makes your fundraising, uh, that much more, um, acceptable, I guess, you know, where you're not doing a, we're, we're going to go ahead with this project, and so we're going to do the fundraising. If we, if we turn this down tonight, would you do that fundraising?
I have no choice, unfortunately. Um, these, these upgrades have to be done. Part of it is the MCACA grant. Um, you know, the project has to be commenced within the year, you know, within a year of awarding. And these are long overdue necessities. Um, the annual Road to Restoration fundraising campaign is going to be something that I will do, be doing on an annual basis. So there's a lot of upgrades that need to happen. And this is one of the things that was most pressing, um, that we've applied for these project grants for. So, uh, yes, we, we would like to commence with it. Um, and, you know, the, like I said, the Road to Restoration, um, is going to be an annual giving campaign based around these uh, capital, um, upgrades. And, um, this, this is part of what we're raising funds for. um, the, this project. But, yeah.
I don't think you'll get a whole lot of kickback that says you don't need that bathroom. Anyone, anyone that uses the auditorium, uh, you know, they know.
It's, it's one of the things.
To be done. Yeah.
Yeah.
So. That's, I just wondered if uh you wanted to see this happen so you could proceed with the, with the fundraising, you know what I mean? It's like, okay, the city said, uh, yep, we're gonna start with this project. And so write me a check, would you please? I get it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good. Um, any other comments for Sheila on this item topic? See, no more hands going up or any no waves to me. Andrew, would you see if the, our audience has a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, once again, if anyone has a public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature and we'll recognize you for public comment. I see none.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, seeing there are no more comments, what does the commission say on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a bid waiver for the contract with Frederick Construction for the Sturgis Young Main Floor Restroom Project Design in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as presented and authorize Michael Hughes to sign all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Commissioner Klinger to approve this agenda item. Do we have support?
Mr. Good will support that motion.
A couple people. Um, we have support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Lemon. Commissioner Lemon is frozen. Um, okay, we'll see. Comes back Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Wait a minute.
Commissioner Lemon, you're good?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not real happy or uh understanding here what I'm hearing, so I'm not gonna support this at this time. Are we talking about doing all three at once or two out of three or one out of two or on these bathrooms at the auditorium?
We're talking about all three on the main floor.
At the same time?
At the same time.
Is, is there one in the basement that needs it too?
The lower level will be next on the docket, yes.
Okay, are they connected to the ones above or not? Are they independent?
They are independent and can function while the main floor is under construction.
Guys know what they're doing?
One would hope.
I'm just concerned because it's sound, I I've been there. It's all cement and tile. So it's not gonna be an easy job. That's just why I've got a concern here.
Right, that's probably why it's quarter of a million dollars as well.
All right. So. This is my question.
Commissioner Lemon, or so you're voting nay? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
So eight to one motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna say uh thank you for the job you're doing at Sunday. My, I've taken Diana there to the brunch a couple times and we've enjoyed uh the atmosphere, the food, and the folks that are working with with you. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the last agenda item, in-person public meetings. Michael Hughes.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up my screen. Show you something. Got a couple things to show here, maybe to help explain this a little bit better. Um, yeah, I wanted to talk about um in-person meetings and get some direction from the commission. Uh, I think it was on March second, the governor, um, or I should say, the Health Department came out with um, an updated order for uh wearing masks in gatherings. I don't know if anybody's ever looked at this before, but this is, I just copied this provision out of the order. But where we fall and have fallen um based on information, this is kind of was our best guess. And and I also verified it from the Health Department, County Health Department, is we, we have been under these general indoor gatherings. And so now number two, it's changed for non-residential venues. Um, we can have a maximum of twenty-five people and they don't have to or there's no restriction on the number of households. If you keep on going down to C, there's this other section that talks about um how this is two A and two B are subject to these limitations. Uh, and one of them has been this issue of emergency rules by my OSHA. And I wanna share another little, um. You can probably tell I didn't spend a ton of time on this, but I made a flow chart and I'll have you take a look. Just helps you understand this a little bit. But we have the gatherings face mask order. I updated this. This is our capacity limits for non-residential gatherings. No more than twenty-five people. And then, of course, we, we are subject as an employer to this my OSHA emergency rule, um, which basically said that um an employee shall work remotely if feasible. And so we include this as uh for remote meetings, if we can do virtually, we sure, and we're required to. And I would say that that's, I I'd say that's generally accepted among um municipalities. Um, what I believe the state did and intended with the latest order is to allow in-person meetings for public bodies. Um, and I say that just because they put it in their media release. It's on a Q and A section on the state website and they refer to public meetings. But what I think they didn't really resolve and and maybe um we, we've actually seen this a couple of times where they make restriction changes, but it didn't fix something else that maybe contradicts it. Um, so I think while they intended to allow public meetings in person, they didn't change this my OSHA rule. Uh, and so I shared some information from, from Roger that basically said um um, said the same thing. Um, so given that, I just wanted to just have a discussion with you and decide whether we wanna go in person. Um, I I think that's, if there is an issue, I think it's fairly low risk because I believe they intended um to allow meetings to occur. But we have other issues to consider and discuss. And that is we have twenty-five person restriction. And so what do we do in the event that we have, you know, between commissioners, staff, uh, guests in public, what do we do when we get to that twenty-five uh person threshold? And we, we did some experimenting with hybrid meetings previously um with the commission and with the planning commission. And we really had trouble particularly with people that were remoting in, hearing anything. And and I I've mentioned this to a couple of you, but I attended a planning commission virtually and it was it was not good. And we had many people that were remoting in virtually and they could not hear anything. And so not only was it dysfunctional, but it, it, it really prevent, I mean, when we're having public hearings and um people shouldn't be able to hear and make comment. It, it, it did not work and I, I can't imagine doing that again. Um, because we could easily get into situations where people don't hear, they don't make comment. And we've, we've had public hearings and we're changing ordinances and approving other things. So that issue um doesn't really work well. And I I didn't even know how difficult it was to hear until I actually did it remotely. Um, and the part of the problem is that the, the electronic device that we're using to remote somebody in, that mic has to pick up everything else. The microphones at the auditorium and the speakers, when it's picking up noise, you can't even understand what it is. So you can turn up the volume, but you can't understand what people are saying. Um, the, the best way to hear somebody is to be in proximity to the, to the electronic device. So Andrew and I were talking about, well, how do we rectify this? And there's a couple of options. One would be to purchase a portable mic system. And I think Dan and Andrew have done some research and that runs about uh seven thousand dollars. And so what we'd be doing is everybody plugs in and has mics. And that way, when you're running the virtual, someone could actually hear it. Um, the other option that I think might be worth investigating if, if we wanna really have in-person meetings is um to actually do a Zoom meeting in person. So we would all have our electronic devices. We would have a Zoom meeting. We'd run it much like we're running now, so the public could view it and participate. Um, um, and that would, I think, resolve our twenty-five, you know, limit number. The problem is, and some of you have experienced this, is that once you're in proximity to someone and you're hat, you're using your, your electronic device microphone, you're often gonna get feedback. So in order, I think, to effectively have an in-person meeting using Zoom or any other platform, we would have to use headphones. And I think some of them, some of you use those now. Um, so that, I think, is the most practical way to have an in-person meeting. Um, we do have a microphone system in the V-Slow Room that's set up for this. The problem is you can only fit eighteen people if you try to meet the distancing requirements. And so you could hardly, hardly have a meeting in the V-Slow Room um under those conditions. So we would, we would have it at the auditorium. And we probably, i- in order to make sure we're ready, should have some sort of test event or bring our devices in. We have headphones. We try to do a test virtual meeting in person. I know I've just said a lot. I'm happy to answer questions or hear ideas on how you'd like to move forward.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Mullins first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um. Uh, Commissioner Wiki had, did the invocation tonight and prior to that, he stressed the importance of having, you know, people are meant to be together and and in each other's company. And I understand that and I fully concur with that. But I'm gonna go the opposite way on that because of the fact of the, the situation that we're in right now. Um, I feel that it's probably best just to stick with the virtual for now, only because of the fact that and you answered my question, Mike. I was, I was wondering if we still had to practice social distance, which we do, which means we'd be in a bigger place like the auditorium. And looking at tonight's meeting, we've got eighteen on there right now. We were up to, I think, twenty-two at one point. Um, and this is a really a whole home kind of meeting tonight, let alone having anything that might be controversial or or uh, you know, important to a lot of other, a lot of people in the community. Um, and then trying to get everybody in that wants to get in would be, would be just, I think, would just be a hell. Um, the, we're getting the hang of it and I wanna thank Andrew for what he does to set these things up. And he does more behind the scenes than what most people probably realize. And thank you, Andrew, for what you do on those. But um, it just seems to me that if we're stuck at a number of twenty-five and um we're gonna have all kinds of connectivity issues if we try to do something with everybody in the room. And if everybody's gonna have to have a computer with headphones anyway, why the heck are we sitting in the same room together to begin with? Um, I think that it's just best just to stick with until these rules get uh lifted a bit more. Um, we only meet every two weeks. It's not like we're in class together every day and it's important to see each other, although I do enjoy you guys' company. I think that if it were an everyday thing, I might wanna reconsider doing something more uh permanent and in-person. But we're just every two weeks. It's twice a month that we meet. I don't think it's that big of a deal for our uh emotional well-being of each of us. So uh, I think that we should just continue the way we're doing it right now until uh things get eased up a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
I did have one thought. Uh, I, I don't have an issue with the way we're doing it now, other than, yeah, we don't. We're not together and um there's just something different about actually being together. Um, you know, restaurants, I've been to restaurants where they're using Plexiglas uh when you're within six feet. And uh, to be able to use the V-Slock and put Plexiglas up and use the speaker system that's in there with a, you know, one device that's recording and doing Zoom for the public uh to where we don't, wouldn't have to be on a computer. You know, there's a speaker system, so that device will pick up everybody at the same volume. Uh, it wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have to uh spend extra money, except maybe for Plexiglas. Um, just, you know, and so numbers wouldn't be an issue because it would just be staff and and commissioners. Um, I don't know that it would have to be as difficult as maybe presented. But that was just my idea. And but if it's, you know, the wish of the commission, it's, this is fine as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Good, you waved at me. Do you have a comment?
I do, I do.
Okay.
I would like to uh concur with Vice Mayor Mullins. Um, first of all, I will say that uh, while I certainly appreciate uh Sheila Boldas uh building over there, um, my hearing system doesn't work very well in either the lower level or in the dining room. And I find, you know, I, I'm wearing my headphones here. I don't miss a word. I really appreciate that. And we see that uh in the world we're in today, it continues to evolve. Uh, no one uh has any uh uh concrete answers for me, except that uh the vaccine is continuing to be sent out there for people that choose to take it. And that's what's bringing about the changes in the methods or uh ways in which people are meeting, uh whether or not families can get together, whether or not you can visit your uh elder people in the homes, uh whether or not you get to uh uh eat in a restaurant or not. And so uh, I think that uh along with Vice Mayor Mullins, I think that we stay in this holding pattern of the virtual meeting until such time as the restrictions. Uh, and I gotta believe that we're always gonna be under restrictions now. Uh, and but the restrictions are such that we could meet in the V-Slow Room. Uh, we can sit at our appointed seat and we can enjoy each other's company within that meeting area and conduct the business of the city uh in that method. But uh up until that time, I think uh this is the way to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good. Uh, Commissioner Burr, I see you, Skip. Hang on just a second. Commissioner Burr.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm sure that the auditorium could uh handle a crowd such as we had in the hospital meeting we had on center stage in the auditorium. You know, the seating that was available. So I don't think that would be a problem, but uh looking at seven thousand dollars for a sound system, uh, I just assume stick on virtual myself as much as I dislike virtual. Uh, at least for a month or two, I would like to revisit this uh maybe in another three meetings and see where we are as far as uh the COVID and maybe get together, get together again. So. Uh, so a short term is, I guess I concur with uh, stand on virtual at the time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Commissioner Leven. Okay, can Harry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I was listening to the news a little bit today and for some reason, it looked like there's a swath of states starting in the North Dakota, running down the center of the country and ending up in Texas. And then maybe a couple on either side of that swath that are going back to normal. And I'm just trying to figure out how they judge the criteria to go back to normal. And we're sitting here talking about these technical meetings with so many in the crowd and ratios and everything like that. What's the facts determined or by? You know, to.
The governor, the governor.
The who?
The governor.
We got one? Have we really got one? We got one? Have we really got one?
Oh, that's what's determining the rules.
I'm wondering, I could use a tire gauge to check the IQ on that one, but uh this, just uh the criteria based on either side of that swath coming from the Dakotas down to Texas, Louisiana, and the states all the way in between. It was right on uh Fox News. I think they said seventeen states were there pushing normal. No masks, no nothing. Everything's basically going to normal, but it's under uh the watch. And here we are sitting here trying to like, like divide up pie or something. I just, it, it's just not quite normal in that respect. But I was just wondering where they're getting their criteria from to determine that this is the best way to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Lippman. Um, before I come to you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Wiki, I believe you did have your hand raised. Do you have a comment?
Uh, I did. Uh, I just wanted to clarify when I was talking about meeting, I was talking about the VSL room because it, a couple of commissioners brought up uh the auditorium. I was just, you know, because the, there's a good sound system in the VSL room. And um I just thought if you put the one device where the speaker's facing, anybody listening online would be able to hear it, no problem. You put Plexiglas up and we'd be able to meet as Commissioner Good was talking about. That's it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Uh Vice Mayor uh Mullins.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just in response to Commissioner Lippman there, I think it, you know, most of the times these different areas of the country, they're just doing things um that might be more politically motivated. And I I think we need to stay away from that and steer clear and just do what's best for us as a commission. And um it seems that, that the best way for us right now, because of the number, no matter, you know, who's in office at the highest level in the state, we must follow those things. And, and we're our municipality who are guided by those. And um the best thing probably at this point in time is just to, just to continue on as, as virtual if we can. Um, I, I don't like it any more than anybody else does. I like being in person. And, you know, seeing each, everybody's faces and, and things like that, watching body language and, and the interruption of the things that you have on the, the Zoom is, is bothersome at times, but um I just think that the best thing for now is just to, just to continue on the way we're doing it. And I don't know if we're gonna, we're gonna be taking a uh motion on this thing, I'm guessing, or something. I'm not sure.
I think it's just a, a, an agreement. We're gonna say there's no motion on this.
Okay.
Right, Michael?
Yeah, I, I guess, um.
Roger's waving.
Roger wants to wave, so.
I can't find my, my hand button, as I say. I just want to complicate things a little more. Right now, we've got legislation that allows us to meet remotely and comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements. Unless that's extended, that legislation terminates March thirty-first. And to be in compliance with Open Meetings Act, we'd have to go back to regular in-person meetings. There is a provision that allows each municipality to adopt its own emergency rule that could extend um Open Meetings Act remotely uh through the end of the year. The municipal league is actively encouraging the legislature to address the Open Meetings Act issue itself directly. Uh but so far that hasn't happened. So if a decision is made that we're going to continue um for the time being, uh meeting remotely, I would encourage that we consider adopting an emergency order um that allows us to uh comply with the Open Meetings Act. Um, that's something we could adopt uh at the next meeting and, and still be okay. Uh but uh unfortunately, we have various state agencies that aren't communicating particularly well with each other that are going in different directions. Um, and it's, it's making it difficult trying to figure out what we should or shouldn't be doing. But the Open Meetings Act issue is, is pretty clear.
Okay. Thank you, Roger. Um, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say I'd prefer to stay with the digital format for a while. And to what Mr. Bird was saying, I thought I seen something on the MML. I thought they sent me something today that there's a bill out there now that they're gonna vote for to extend that Open Meetings Act. I'm not real sure.
I, yeah, I think you're correct, Commissioner Smith. I mean, as Roger said, um, MML's been lobbying and I think there's some bills out there. And so, I mean, I would expect that if, if not much has changed with the gathering order, that they probably will extend it. But we also, as Roger suggests, we probably need to be thinking about potentially, you know, an emergency order um for the twenty-fourth. And in fact, we, we were right up against this last time and we were discussing it internally, but then they extended the, the law last time. So we didn't have to do anything, but we'll, we'll be ready if need be.
Okay, uh, yeah. Commissioner Mullins.
Yeah, just real quick on uh Rogers. I, I would only assume they'd probably extend it as well, but for, if we did initiate an emergency um thing there that you were talking about, would it, that would just be a single uh boat? There wouldn't have to be a first and second on that or anything?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments on this agenda item? It looks like you're just looking for consensus, Michael, to stay either with this or do some type of hybrid?
I guess what, how we could handle this, um based on what I'm hearing is unless there's a motion to um move to in-person meetings, we would continue status quo.
Okay, thank you. Would any commissioner like to make a motion to go to in-person meetings? I might as well ask it that way. I see that. I don't see any motions or any hands coming up. So it looks like we are going to stay for the time at uh the Zoom or electronic meetings. If I don't have any waving, no, no, no. So it, it looks like I'm gonna stay right where we're at, Michael.
Okay.
Thank you. Probably, we probably, I'd probably recommend we work on something for the next meeting for what Roger explained.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Necessary.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, we are now to the next, last, the, the uh item number eleven on our agenda, where the commissioner's staff comments. Let's start with staff. I will go down here to Sheila. Would you like to make any additional comments?
I would recommend that everybody uh that can stop by on Friday for our Eat, Drink and Be Irish celebration in conjunction with the winter wind down. Um, but also thank you for approving the motion to move forward with the restroom project.
What time is your program started Friday?
Five PM, runs till eight PM. Uh, local teacher Elliot Guideman will be playing live Celtic music as well.
All right. Thank you. Um, on my screen, I think Holly, you're next.
I don't have anything tonight to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna go over here before I forget. I usually always forget. Roger, do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, I'm fine for the nightmare. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's go over here to Mr. Rhodes.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dan.
Uh, the only comment I would have is I'd like to extend an invitation to all the gentlemen uh to look into the, there's a new organization, I guess, group starting up in the community, uh surrounding communities, one hundred good fellows, um looking to generate uh generate, I guess, interest in supporting charities in the area. Uh, if you have questions or anything, uh there's a Facebook page or you can contact me and I can give you more information.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, he smiled finally. Damien, would you like to make any comments? It looked like you were froze. Are you, you're, you're muted. Do you have any comment?
No, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. It's always good to be here with you guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir, for being here. Um, Andrew.
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And again, I will comment uh like Vice Mayor Mullins did. Thank you for all you do for, for us through this program. Appreciate it. Uh, city manager, Michael, any com, any more additional comments?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Burrow.
Uh, yes, I'd like to speak to, uh, we had some excitement Friday, as probably everyone knows. Um, uh, the police were pursuing someone and they um went down South Street at a higher rate of speed and took out a uh utility pole with enough force to throw it across the street to the backyard of one of the people that was uh living on the corner there. Um, I was just wondering, how fast was uh, was that vehicle going? Do we know? Is, can Damon answer that or should we, should I talk to Ryan about that?
Damon, did you know how fast they were going, by chance?
Um, still under investigation. Uh, we should have some complete results of everything um later this week or when Ryan gets back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So we have, so we have no idea how fast he was traveling?
Doesn't look like it. It's under investigation.
All right. Well, I guess I'll hold questions till the next meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Uh, just one thing. I thought I'd try an eighties background to see if it made me look younger. That's it.
It's perfect. All right, uh Commissioner Claire.
I've been holding back all night wanting to say that it looked like a Flakka Seagulls album cover in my corner by Justin. Uh, I just wanted to echo Sheila. Um, you know, I'll be down there Friday night uh checking out the food at the auditorium, but um just I wanted to uh speak on the splash pad and the um the progress we are making with the public. It seems like we're getting a lot of feedback, uh a lot of engagement. Uh, I really appreciate all of the um brainstorming that goes on in these meetings. And we're, we're very much moving at a pace that will uh uh very much guarantee our grant proposal timeline. So um, that's a great thing that's going on. I just wanted you guys to know that uh it seems like even the student body in the schools is excited. Uh, there's a lot of feedback coming from that space as well and a lot of chatter. So uh, other than that, um my background says that the season is here. Uh, I was out Sunday enjoying that and yesterday and today. Uh, hard to beat it. Um, but uh, yeah, uh uh this, that'll be all. Hope you guys enjoyed the sun the last few days.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Malone.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Smith.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Good.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I'm sorry that Barry Cox left. Uh, I, I wanted to let him know that the word quasi-sentential was developed by the Vanderbilt School of Engineering. So uh, that's where that word came from. Um, secondly, uh, I don't know, maybe Mike Hughes, somebody could tell me. Uh, what were they doing at the uh exit driveway? Uh, there at City Hall, between City Hall and uh police fire. You know, they dug a big hole. They poured a lot of nice new concrete. Did they have a water valve or something go bad?
Thought it was a catch basin repair.
Oh, it was a catch basin uh repair?
It was, I think they had done a repair and it was sinking. Um, and they were fixing that.
That was pretty significant. Um, then uh lastly, uh, I was there Saturday for the Styrofoam recycling. Uh, I did the nine to ten shift and there wasn't a chance to sit down. Um, we uh filled bag after bag after bag uh with Styrofoam. And I, Mike Hughes, were you there at the end of the uh recycle? Uh Travis, were you there at, at noon?
I don't think so. I think it was Monica Smith.
Okay. Well, we had a great turnout between nine and ten. I can tell you that. I think the community is really picking up on that uh Styrofoam recycling and it's a, it's a good thing to see, in my opinion. When that stuff burns, it burns black. Uh, it fills up landfills unnecessarily. And uh if they can turn it into picture frames, more power to them. So I thank the community for their participation. And uh that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Commissioner Lippman.
Well, I'd like to say that uh the snow's gone, right?
Almost.
Almost, okay. Uh, yeah, we got to see our uh oldest daughter down here. We're gonna be returning on the twenty-fourth, which I guess is a commission meeting night. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, the flight's supposed to get in a south bend around four thirty, so I'm gonna see if we can't make it.
No, you're not gonna make it.
Mary told me we're not gonna make it. Speed limit. Well, wow. But anyway, I'm, I'm gonna be kinda glad to get back. I missed a few things at home and haven't seen it basically for a couple of months. It's highly unusual, but hey, I'm retired now, so. And with Zoom, I guess you can be where you want to be when you want to be there. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. Uh, so looking forward to warmer weather and warmer things going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lippman. Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just a quick thanks again to Andrew for uh setting these things up. Uh, thanks too to the staff for putting together these commission packets, man. Uh, there's a whole lot of information in there and, and usually it's really well, uh, well done. Um, and a special thank you to Holly. You know, you answered a couple of questions via email today for me. I appreciate that. I never got a chance to respond to you, but I was gonna ask you specifically um and say thanks for sending along this uh board report for the monthly financial review that you sent along with this, that got sent along, I guess, with this whole thing. And I'm wondering, is that something that we should expect to see on a monthly basis?
Uh, quarterly.
Was that just a quarterly thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it said weekly or monthly on there, so.
It's on the cover. I know, I'm gonna change it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that. That's a whole lot of reading. I've gotten through some of it, but uh it looks like it's interesting.
Some of those uh modified pages for the budget, so I was hoping those would help you out.
Yep, yep. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh Vice Mayor, you done? Thank you, sir. Um, I don't have a lot. So I just want to thank everybody for joining in tonight, being here. Uh, appreciate the words that Commissioner Wiki said in our invocation. Uh, really do appreciate those. And again, if you haven't been to the auditorium on Sunday for the brunch, um, try it out. It's, 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 they're doing a good job over there. They really are. Uh, it is, you, they are practicing social distancing and it's, it's, they're doing a good job. All right. And with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor Heil.